Well, I'd like to call to order the May fourth city council meeting here. Take the roll call, please.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Member Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Haddon?
Here.
And the pledge of allegiance.
So are we looking for the approval of the adopt agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Does anyone want to make the motion to?
I'll make a motion we approve the agenda.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
And?
Bitcha.
And then just call for a vote, Deputy Mayor.
And can we get a vote?
All those in favor.
Oh, all those in favor adopting the agenda.
Aye.
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 And then the same for the consent.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Alright.
Second it.
We can, we vote on the approve month or the consent agenda, consent agenda.
All those in favor say aye.
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 And then Deputy Mayor, we have a guest here under public comments, Josh Campbell from the Lions Club. Go ahead and step up.
You ready for me already, huh?
Absolutely. You have to go first, so you can leave.
I appreciate that. I had to sit through almost the entire City of Lakeland meeting a while back, so I appreciate that. Members of the council, thank you very much for allowing me to come tonight. Just wanted to stop by and introduce myself. My name is Josh Campbell. I am the president of the Afton Bayport Lakeland Lions Club. Some of you may be familiar, I know at least some of you are familiar with what we do. But I just wanted to stop down and for those of you unfamiliar, for those who may be watching, just want to tell you a little bit about the Lions Club and kind of what we do in the area and looking for ways that maybe we can partner with the city. So our club's been around for, I believe, thirteen years now. We just celebrated our birthday. As I mentioned, it covers the areas of Afton, Bayport, and Lakeland. We really have two objectives. One is to raise money and one is to give money away. So some of the things that we do to raise money typically involve selling food and or beverages. So we do, we sell food down at Strawberry Fest, Derby Days in Bayport. We run the bingo at Washington County Fair. It's our largest fundraiser. We also, this year started doing food at the National Ice Sculpture Contest down in Stillwater, which was very successful. So we plan on doing that moving forward. So we raise all this money. We volunteer many, many hours of volunteer. And what do we do with this money? Our objective is to return the money primarily and predominantly to the areas that we serve. So to Afton, to Bayport, and to Lakeland. Now, some of our money does go to Lions Club International, some does go to some surrounding areas, but the vast majority of the money that we raise does stay within the communities that we serve. So some of the things that we do in the community and some of the other nonprofits that we support, Valley Outreach, Community Thread, the Holiday Hope Program, we do Stillwater High School scholarships. We give away three scholarships to Stillwater graduating seniors. We've helped here with the Lakeland Food Harvest. We've got a stretch of highway that we have adopted and clean every year. We do eyeglass collection. As many of you may know, that the Lions are known for vision. So one of the big things that we do, I think that makes a big impact, is kids' sight vision screening. So we've been around to a number of elementary schools, including Afton, Lakeland, but in the mostly eastern suburbs of the cities, but not exclusive to the eastern suburbs. And we screen preschool and kindergarten age children for not necessarily to see how good they can see, but to see if there are any issues that our specific equipment detects. So it screens for, you know, nearsighted, farsighted, but it also screens for astigmatism and many other macular or eye issues that may arise. So send referrals and suggest that the kids take, or the parents take their kids to a doctor to follow up. So we've given money to the Afton Lakeland School Playground. We've provided teacher kits for the teachers there at the school. So there are a number of different things and ways that we can contribute. Sometimes we've just given money to people in need in the community. If somebody reaches out and say, hey, this family's in trouble, there was a family whose house burnt down. We raised some money and gave it directly to those. So we really, it's important to us to try to make an impact as much as we can in our particular area. So we do have an event coming up that I'd like to mention, and I'll leave the flyer if that's okay. If you wouldn't mind maybe posting it on the door or something. It's a community volunteer event. It'll be held May twentieth at the elementary school. So there will be a number of service projects that we'll be doing. So we're inviting members of the community just to come in if you feel like volunteering. If you feel like helping with some service projects, you're more than welcome to come in and help. We are going to be doing onsite vision screening. We're going to be taking donations for eyeglasses and hearing aids, pop tops, gently used children's books, and bring in your lead tackle and get a free fishing lure. So there will be a number of things going on. We'll have food and beverage onsite. So we're hoping to get a decent turnout and really just kind of let people in the, in the community who don't know that we're around, that we are, and just hoping to, you know, have people stop by and maybe help with some service projects or learn more about the Lions Club and what we do. So again, I appreciate the opportunity for allowing me to come in and talk a little bit about our club. We certainly, you know, if you have need in your jurisdiction, and if you think it's something that the Lions Club, you know, could help with, please, please feel free to reach out to us. I know Tim, I know you know, you know, a few of the members, so just keep us in mind, you know. We'd love to, like I said, we'd love to, to make a difference where we can. So again, appreciate the time. Thanks for letting me come. Does anybody have any, any questions? Okay.
I think my daughter was a scholarship back a few years ago.
She was?
She had a scholarship award.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're continuing to raise more and more money and therefore giving more and more away. So our scholarships now, we give away, I think, an additional scholarships and then plus the denominations are higher than they were then, so too.
I've even helped at the bingo. It's fun.
Yeah, bingo's our biggest fundraiser by far. Yeah, so if you're at the fair, stop on by and we're also always looking for celebrity bingo callers. So you guys qualify as celebrities here. So thanks again. I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in, Josh.
Thanks.
So now we're going on to this unfinished business, a new business? And we'll just start off with the consideration of the twenty twenty-three road project bids?
Yes, John Frode, the city engineer, will take over.
Deputy Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. It's been a little while since I've seen you and I'm glad to meet some new faces here today, too. I did hand out a letter just before the meeting started. It's dated May first, addressed to your clerk. And this letter and the attached document behind it is a summary of the bids received for your twenty twenty-three street improvements project, which generally is the south end of Lakeland Shores Road and Quinlan Avenue from Fourth Street to Division. And this project has been discussed at your meetings previously. You've authorized the engineer to do surveys and design and to solicit bids. And so this project was advertised in your, in your official newspaper. Bids were received on May first. We have received three bids, and that's the second page here. If you're interested in that type of detail, you'll see the three bids submitted. And the lowest bid was submitted by Minnesota Paving and Materials in the amount of a hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. We do have experience with Minnesota Paving and Materials. They do have a facility located up on Hudson Boulevard in Afton. If you've drive that way very often, you'll know what I'm referring to. So we consider them, although they're a big operation now, they have a local presence. They have a history as being a local contractor going back to their days as Tower Asphalt, which is, has been since purchased twice now. So with that, I would open, open this for discussion. If you have questions for me, let me know. If you wish to proceed with the project this evening, you would need to pass a motion accepting the low bid and instructing the clerk and the mayor to sign on behalf of the city when the contracts are prepared. So I'll stand for any questions.
Well, this is basically just the milling fill then, right? And then some patchwork if it's needed for the foundation?
That's basically it. It's a process we refer to as mill and overlay. And so the contractor comes in with a milling machine and mills off the top one and a half to two inches of asphalt. And then we'll come back then and we'll review the underlying pavement, what's left there. And if there are areas that need to be patched, then they'll come in and patch these areas before they put an overlay across the whole surface.
So like over by my house, we got a hole, so they'll probably fix that?
Yeah, we do have, we're aware of that settlement that, you know, you've been throwing hot or cold mix in for years. And so we do have a pay item in here for them to do what we call an exploratory excavation at that location. They'll have to kind of dig around that hole. Hopefully, we can find what's, what's creating that. And well, the intent is to remove it, replace it with good soil and gravel, and then patch before the overlay's done.
I don't know. I think the bids look good. I think we should
pursue it.
Pull the trigger.
Yeah.
So are we going to have quality assurance? Is there, are you, are we going to have someone onsite inspecting then?
That's correct.
The mix and stuff like that? Is that in here or no?
It's, no, that's
You talked about it, I think, before on one thing, maybe.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so SEH does that on your behalf as your city engineer. So that's not included in the price. They, the contractor does do some of their own quality assurance that are required under contract to follow M.D.A. standards when they do. But we do, on your behalf, administer the contract, which means we hold a pre-construction conference with the contractor. We could, we, when I say coordinate, we coordinate our services with theirs. So we're here when they're doing the work as needed. Now, some of the work doesn't require us to be standing out there the whole time, but there are certain aspects of the work that do. And so we will provide what we call a resident project representative. Some people used to use the term inspector. The RPR is who we provide out here. And then I'll serve as the, as the, as the engineer for, for the project. So we will see it all the way through to the end. We'll make sure that the contractor's complying with the contract documents and the design standards. If there is any need for a change order, we will help administer that and bring it back to you for approval, for instance. And then when project is complete, we will bring an application for payment to you with a recommendation to pay.
And then what's the timeframe on this? Are we waiting for them to give us a time? Do we have a date when they want to start and end?
Right, yeah, so we have a, an end date, which is, let's see, I did bring the contract with me. It's October, it's the fall, it's fall, so it'll be completed this fall. They can fit this work in wherever they want to throughout the summer. I talked with the contractor's representative on, it was late last week. And he said, yeah, we don't know exactly where it's going to fit in yet, but we plan to come in and do the milling one day, take about a half a day, and then come back the next day or at least within a week to make paving.
Yeah.
Now, there's nothing in the contract that holds them to that, and residents can drive on the milled surface. So if they do come in and mill, and it's a week or two or more that the, before the pavers can come back, that's okay. We could, we can accept that. We can drive on that in the meantime. They need some time to do the patching.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And that, that's good. It doesn't affect it, so.
And then is there any accommodations then for access on Shores Road for the residents when they're paving? I mean, that's going to be a nightmare.
Right, that's a very good question. So in the contract, we put some very strict stipulations on notice. Now, the fact of the matter is Lakeland Shores Road is so narrow, and there is no second way out, that the Lakeland Shores residents are going to have periods of time where they simply can't get in and out. So the requirement of the contractor is to provide advance notice, like several days. I don't remember if I put in there a full week, but advance notice for when they need to do the closure. And then again, within two days, provide another notice so that folks, you know, kind of have a, hey, it's coming, and then hey, we're going to be here in two days. And then the residents will have to work around that. They're going to have to, they're going to have to get themselves out in the morning and stay out until the contractor's done, and then they can come back in and they'll be good to go again until the next operation. That happened twice, once for milling and once for paving.
Right, yep.
Deputy Mayor, councilmembers, for those of you that have not gone through one of these major road projects, all the things that John pointed out in terms of quality assurance inspections, I mean, I don't like that word, payment, notice to residents, that is standard practice with these, these contracts. And again, with the city engineer overseeing those projects. So they don't get paid until it's signed off on.
Any other questions? Alright, if not, again, I'll just restate that if you'd like to move forward with the project, the council will need to pass a motion this evening awarding the contract in this amount stated on the letter to Minnesota Paving and Materials, and then instruct, or authorize, rather, the clerk and, and the mayor to sign the contracts when they're prepared.
Okay, so I will make a motion to accept the bid from Minnesota Paving and Materials. That's right, John?
Correct.
Okay. Low bid of one hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents for the project for Lakeland Shores Road and Quinlan, correct, John?
That's correct.
And authorize?
And what?
And authorize clerk and mayor to execute contract.
Okay, what she said.
Yeah, I got it.
I'll second the motion. Need a vote, Tim?
Alright. We need to have a vote here to approve the construction Minnesota Paving and Materials on the Lakeland Shores and Quinlan for the total bid price of one hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. And to approve the signing of it by the city clerk and deputy mayor.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Just from my notes, Deputy Mayor, was that a unanimous?
Yes.
Four, four zero?
Thank you. Okay, on that, can we, some new business? I would like to talk about some other projects that I'd like to think we should do on road projects. I don't know if you guys have been down on Second Street by the bank. I think we need to look at pursuing working on that street and maybe First Street. I don't know if there's any other ones that Mr. Perotti thinks that
Can we do Quinlan North, John? Can we do Quinlan North of Second?
Quinlan North is getting bad.
Yeah, Quin.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, north of Second Street up there, Second Street North, yeah. We drove that one there.
Well, I drive it, too.
Well, we were on an inspection tour.
I was just going home. So there would be?
First and Second Street South and Quinlan North.
Yeah, so that, from Second Street North?
Fourth? Where does that end?
Third.
Third Street?
Ours is, yeah.
In between?
Third Street, yeah.
Okay, Third Street.
So just the one, basically short little block?
You know, John's looking it up right now.
And then?
I guess where we're at, we talked to John earlier, and it's basically, we can authorize another project, project and go through the process of getting estimates and doing all that stuff. Getting that started is basically what we're looking at doing.
So what would happen is he would put the proposal out. Hopefully, by the time our next meeting in July, if we don't have a June one, we could, the council could vote on it, and we could get bids, and then we can, depending on, have both them projects taken care of this year.
Okay, I was wondering about the timeline on that.
Yeah.
Well, and just to be clear, Deputy Mayor and councilmembers, the, the action tonight would be just authorizing the city engineer to go through that, the same process we went through with this for those roads that you mentioned. You're not, you're not committing to doing the project.
And I guess I would
But just get the ball rolling, because
And I would look at, because I mean, I'm looking at, you know, these bid numbers versus what we estimated. They're, they're great, and I was wondering
Would like to keep that going?
Yeah, if we want to look at other streets, do we do some of these little smaller streets that feeder streets? You know, that dead end? I don't know. You know, do we look at Division Court with the circle, Division Street? Do we look at Second Street North, or do we do a cut and patch? And I guess I would look at, and I don't know what Mr. Perotti's availability is in the next few days of looking at them and or if you have anything on file with what you think the streets are like.
So it, I'm just going to look here and see when's the last time we did an inspection. I think Mayor Bischoff at, well, at the time, I think Councilmember Bischoff. And I did an inspection in twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
And so it's due again to inspect. So I wouldn't want to make a recommendation based on these ratings, but we can do another drive of the city
Yeah.
here in the next couple of weeks and, and do an assessment. The three streets that I jotted down from your discussion so far, so Second Street North, no, sorry, Second Street from the county road to
Quinlan.
Quinlan.
Quinlan. And Second Street South, right? And then First Street South, and then Quinlan on the north side, north of Second. So those three streets, if we got similar bid results as we do now, would total about a hundred and two thousand?
Yep.
Roughly?
And then I was wondering if, if, what, the timeframe, if we looked at it? Because there's like Division Street, there's the Division Circle that cul-de-sac, that court
Yeah.
is in rough shape and some of that.
Is that, is that the one on the west side with the one house or on the
No, that's going towards the river.
Okay.
Yeah. Off the Second Street round about Division Street, you know, and that, that whole thing almost. I don't know how old that is, because I think that, that's all been twenty years plus. And so, and then we'd look at, I don't know what else. I guess we'd have, and then if we did find anything with Mr. Perotti's recommendation having a, but I guess we'd have to look at a proposal, we'd have to put that in with it, yeah.
Deputy Mayor and councilmembers, I would recommend moving forward with those four roads that you noted right now.
Yeah.
Because believe it or not, I know that it's just started, construction season's just started. But you're getting late.
Yeah, we're getting late in the game.
And to love for the time to go out and do an inspection of all the roads. You really are losing time in getting, getting some of these projects done.
So I guess we could get those three and then
Do you want to add Division Street?
Well, it would be from the county road all the way to the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, Division. Oh, the whole, the whole length?
I would think so.
Oh, I thought, okay, okay. Not, not just the court?
No.
Okay.
Division Street, so that'd be four roads.
Correct. First, Second, South.
I have five, so
Quinlan North.
Oh, four unless you're, I was counting Court and, and Street as two separate ones. You might be counting them as one, right? Division?
Correct.
That's fine. Yeah, that's, that's four then.
Yeah, so all three streets going south from Division and Quinlan North between Second.
Okay.
And then the cut and patch on Second Street North, that would be just an extra, or we'd have them do?
Well, if we, if we know, I'm sorry, tell me the segment again for that one?
Second Street North, there's by Quinlan Avenue?
Yeah.
Going east, there's a section that's in rough shape.
Well, we can put cutting and patching on this contract, too, if you want.
Because I would look at doing some of that.
So that's five then?
Yeah.
Basically, yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
John, is that reasonable with the workload here to get it out?
Yeah, so I did allude to that, maybe it was before we actually started our meeting here. I, I, I'm happy to take this direction for me with the understanding that I do need to go back and check with our staff and how far out they're booked, you know, for this year. In terms, sometimes it takes me a long time to get the surveyors out this time of year as they're out on construction projects. But I certainly do everything I can to accelerate that. This is a really, a really compressed schedule, as the clerk mentioned, and, and yet I still, I'm hopeful that I can accommodate it for you and get it done.
Well, and a lot of times, John, correct me if I'm wrong, you go through this process, it does sometimes get too late just because of the work, to get the work done. But a lot of times, these contractors hold the, with the bid, the quote, they keep that place until the spring when they can do the work.
If, if we write the contract that way, giving them all the way to, say, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four?
Yeah.
And I would take that as direction from you, if that's kind of what you want to do with the second contract.
Only if you think the timing is leading that way. But yeah, they'll honor the bids.
Good. So we need to make a motion on that?
Yes. I've got it, yes.
Do you want to read, or do we need to read it, or I suppose?
So I'd make a motion that we would go ahead with engineering on the possible getting bids for road work on Second Street from the county road to Quinlan, First Street, the entire way again, Quinlan north of Second Street, and all of Division Street and Court.
And start the Second Street North, but
She said that.
That's it.
Yeah.
So to be clear, just so I have it right and you have what you intended, the first Second Street that you mentioned is Second Street South between the county road and Quinlan. We also talked about patching of Second Street North up by Quinlan, which is a different segment. Did you, did you want to include that in your motion as well or not?
Yes, both Second Street South all the way and from the county road to Quinlan and Second Street North.
North of Quinlan, or east of Quinlan.
East of Quinlan for cut and patch.
I'm sorry.
Sounds good, yep.
Okay.
And Quinlan itself in front of us, yeah. Five items.
I second the motion.
Vote in time.
Alright, well, let's have a vote here to approve the getting the bids in, or what does it be? The project going for Second Street South from county road to Quinlan, First Street South, and Quinlan north of Second Street North to Third Street, and then the patching of And then the patching of Second Street North from Quinlan East.
There won't be that much heat till in a minute.
No.
That's stuff we talked about.
So then answer it, roll. All right, so we get a vote.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and then motion passes. The ayes have it.
Okay, and Deputy Mayor and council, just because we did this a little on the fly, what I will do to confirm is I'll put a, a, a map and a list together and send it to the clerk. And if she wants to forward it on to one or more of you to confirm that we've got the limits right, or if she's comfortable confirming herself, just to make sure that there's no confusion. I don't want to move
Yes.
work on roads that weren't in the omni list.
It'd be super, John.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, John.
See, we still like it. Tim, Tim doesn't, but we still like it.
I like you, too.
So now we're on to the consideration of the resolution of twenty twenty-three dash zero four, the condemned property on Second Street North, number one six five nine nine? Oh, it is? Twenty twenty? Oh, it's twenty twenty-one?
It is twenty, it's for the agenda, twenty twenty-three oh four.
Oh, the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay.
So now your hard work starts. Um, as you can tell by the attachments, what have we had? We've had two letters sent out to this person, two attorney letters sent out to this person to remove the condemned building. Um, the city has received no response. And the attorney, uh, indicated to me that the next step is this resolution um, that will allow you to, uh, have the attorney, once he has assigned a resolution, he takes it to the district court seeking a summary enforcement order, which would allow the city to demolish the structure. Um, and then put that on the assessments for the property, so the city gets kind of their, their dollars back on that. Once this is, uh, a motion is brought to the district court, the property owner is notified. And they do have twenty days in which to respond. If they don't, uh, respond, then it proceeds as a default and the court issues an order authorizing the city to proceed with the demolition, and then we get a contractor on board. But this resolution has to be, uh, approved first, adopted prior to being able to do that.
So we're, we're dropping the green flag, basically.
Well, after how many years? What was the first letter?
Yeah, this is
Yeah, this has gone on. Let's see, I was, oh God, it's been five years.
It was condemned officially in twenty-one.
But I thought it burned in twenty twenty nineteen, or twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen, probably.
Yeah, I take it there, yeah, yeah.
But yeah, it, like I said, all of this is attached and all the letters that have gone out per the attorney that you're spending fees on, on that attorney work, um, it would be attached to the resolution and then sent to the attorney and that would get the ball rolling.
And we recoup all the fees on everything, right?
You would only recoup, you would not recoup the fees for the attorney work, no.
So
To, at, to this point, though, he's only done two letters.
Yeah.
So just curious, you said we haven't heard from him. I thought the one time we sent it out, we had a, a thing in November to have it get down or to have it taken apart before the end of the year?
He started pulling some things out of this one building, but nothing's been removed.
But I thought their attorney sent us a letter that, that was when they informed us he was gonna fix it up.
And then you haven't done it.
Okay, well, yeah.
He hasn't pulled a permit or anything, so, yeah.
Yeah, he, at one point, there was a letter sent that he was supposed to submit a plan
Yep.
because he wanted to keep it.
Right.
But that has not been done.
Yeah, okay, I, I just, I remember getting
I think he tore the north part off and he's got a trailer parked there, from what I drove by the other day.
And at one point, he did get a dumpster out there and was like throwing some things away from inside the building, but yeah, yeah. Uh, both the fire department and the, um, building inspector has deemed it uninhabitable, so.
So are you ready to proceed? Does anybody want to make a motion to, um, for resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh four?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution twenty twenty-three oh four.
I'll second the motion.
All right, all in favor of, uh, adopting the resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero four to raise the hazardous building located on Second Street North?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the ayes have it. So are we just now moving on to the council and staff reports?
Correct.
Do you have any staff updates from the city clerk?
Uh, I do, Deputy Mayor, council members, just the fact that the mayor did talk to Tri-City and the city has followed suit with Tri-City in terms of picking up all the limbs. Um, they were, city, residents were advised to get their brush out curbside by last Thursday. Uh, it has not been picked up. Uh, Tri-City, uh, kind of underestimated how much brush was out there to pick up. They're still in Lakeland picking up, and they're going to move their way. They, they will be at the city. In the meantime, the county has opened up a, a drop-off site if people want to take their own in. Um, and then the mayor just asked me to let you know, once this fun project is done for Tri-City, then the street sweeping will start and the pothole, so that's all I have.
And then is, does Tri-City's, or Triconi is the one that does the potholes?
Oh, yeah, Triconi, yes. Yep, they do the street sweeping and, yep.
All right, um, council member Shorter, do you have any?
I have nothing.
Council member Wilson, do you have anything?
Uh, just had a brief conversation with Cindy Ritter about the recycling. I haven't heard a boo. I don't know if you've heard anything about it. And, um, it's just a matter of, everything seems to be fine, no, no complaints, nothing. And then, like, I, no, nothing like that.
No, I was glad you were talking about cleanup day.
No, no, no. And the other thing is, is, and, and you did put this out to everybody, is that the spring cleanup now has become the fall cleanup, basically.
Like St. Crap Beach, who the city partners with as well as Lakeland, uh, they just got a little behind
Yeah.
because of some staff issues and people, um,
Yeah.
unexpectedly passing, so, yeah.
So they will be one then?
What?
In the fall.
In the fall, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we, we lost the, the wagon train boss.
Yep.
Kate Piscatello passed away, and she'd done that for years.
Yep.
And they're trying to figure out, no, I'm not volunteering. So that's it.
Council member Jacobs?
Nothing.
All right, I have nothing. Mayor Bischoff's not here, so do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Then we can adjourn.
Aye.
Aye. Well, thanks for coming in.
Yeah. Kept under forty-five minutes before I tell you.